Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Westmont Village Board Budget Workshop Meeting for April 9, 2012. We have a roll call, please.
Mayor Ron is absent tonight. Mayor Pro Tim Scott.
Here.
Trustee Emery is absent. Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Klevenow.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Acting Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Human Resource Director Casey.
Here.
Acting Community Development Director Malik.
Here.
Acting Fire Chief Wise.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Fire Director of Administration Scala.
Here.
Fire Administration Assistant Brady.
Here.
Administration Assistant Malkarsky.
Here.
Deputy Clerk and Finance Collector Kamak.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Brinza.
Here.
IT Manager Liltzerberg is in the control room. Deputy Fire Chief Connolly.
Here.
And Police Administrative Assistant Rice.
Everyone's here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Searle, take it away.
Just a couple of comments to briefly introduce the process. This is our first of our budget hearings. We've got two others scheduled. We can schedule additional ones if the board so desires, but at this point, we have two others scheduled. And our acting finance director is going to walk us through the agenda this evening and make the bulk of the presentation. We have variety of staff members here. They're here mainly to answer questions this evening and be happy to do so. And I think, I don't want to assume, but I think we're looking for fairly informal discussion. And feel free to interrupt at any point and ask any questions that you have. At this point, I'll turn over to Spencer Parker, our finance director, or acting finance director.
All right. Thank you. Wanted to start off by thanking the board for their support in this as always and for thanking them in advance for the wonderful, exciting times we're going to be having coming up with these workshops. Also wanted to thank all the departments for all of the very hard work they did putting this budget together. This is definitely a group project, a lot of work from all of the different departments, from all the different individuals within the departments, and especially a lot of work from our village managers. So wanted to express gratitude for all of those. All right, we'll kind of get started. As you're all aware, we've got our budget binders. And as we generally do, we're going to start off turning to tab one. And we've got in here the summaries and overviews. So let me just start off by, you can see the very first number at the very top, under General Fund, we've got our estimated revenues of about $20 million. We have expenses of also about $20 million with projected net right now of about $540,000. And wanted to kind of walk you through the process that we went through in this budget. So we had everybody submit their budgets, and then we looked at kind of things that we identified as being some of the top priorities of the board, things the board had expressed interest in previously, and indicated that we wanted to make sure we could cut enough out of our budget to be able to identify what we need for a balanced budget to be able to follow those priorities. Departments made these cuts, and they listed them in levels one, two, and three. Levels one and two are reflected within this budget. Level three is not. And we'll go over some of those in just a few minutes. But, so, the $540,000 that you see as a projected deficit at this point could be made up with all the level three cuts, but we wanted to present them all to you as a board and kind of get your feedback on those different level three cuts. So you can see the general fund right now has a projected net deficit of $540,000. And that includes $388,000 in transfers, and we'll go over all of these in a little bit more depth later. The Convention Tourism Fund, you'll see, has a deficit of $179,000. And that is, as we did last year, the Convention Tourism Fund has an amount that the general fund owes it from prior year audit adjustments. And so what we have done, what we did this current year, and then what we're looking at doing this next year, is again budgeting additional in expenses, making up that difference with the amount that's due from the general fund, because this includes the Convention Tourism Fund refunding the general fund for convention tourism-related projects that are within the general fund. I know that's a mouthful, kind of complicated, but similar to what we did last year. And then you can see we've got several of our other funds. We've got our downtown, our Employee Benefit Fund, our Downtown Parking Fund. The only activity in there is interest. And then our next several funds, the Vehicle Replacement Capital Projects, Water and Motor Fuel, you will not see the detail at this point in the budget. We are finalizing some different things as we're looking into some, or I guess not finalizing, but getting some additional information together with regards to potential bonds that we discussed as a possibility. So we've got another meeting with our consultant later this week, so we should have some additional numbers for you, more firm numbers for you by the next budget workshop. And then you can see our IMRF Social Security Fund. And here, now that we're on the first page, we've got the first thing that we'll have to edit for next time. That 1562 is actually supposed to be the number from the second page, the 1629. So it's actually 1,629,000 that goes in that orange box. And I am a little confused because the second page pulls from the first page in general. So I'm a little confused as to how they have different numbers. But the number should be 1,629,136. And then in our Emergency Reserve Fund, this year, we're not budgeting to put any money into it or take any money out of it. Any questions on that first page?
Just go over that last part one more time.
Our Emergency Reserve Fund, this year, we're not planning to transfer any additional monies into it nor to take any monies out of it. It's just going to remain static and constant, as we've done for most of the previous years. Last year, we were able to, with our moratorium on the Vehicle Replacement Program, transfer some additional monies into it to increase it a little bit. But this year, we're just looking at having it remain constant.
So the projected net at the end of the first page is still correct on that?
That's the projected net that will increase it this year, so basically through interest. It's not the balance. If you turn the page, two pages over, we'll see the funds carried forward, and it's a landscape page. And that one shows the estimated cash balance as of 5/01/12. And you can see there, the Emergency Reserve Fund, we're estimating it'll have about $940,000. And so projected carryforward at the end of 4/13 will be about $942,000. So we've got $940,000 in there, and that's about what we'll have at the end of the year. So you can see, we do have an estimated cash carryforward in our general fund of about So if we don't make any additional cuts, we'd be looking at a net deficit of about $290,000.
So that went up from last year. It was about $500,000, $600,000, based on the board's stretch.
Yes. Yep. Any additional questions at this point on any of these first summary sheets? Moving on, in the Preliminary Cuts and Considerations section, the next several red pages are the preliminary cuts, the cuts that have already been made, the levels one and levels two, for all of the different departments. And I'm not going to walk through all of these at this time. When we discuss the different departments, we can look at some of these, and, you know, the departments would be happy to answer any questions we have with them. But the next several pages, all of which are red, are for these cuts. If you want to, you could pull them out of the binder at this point, hold them off to the side, so when we get to the departments, we can, you can refer back to them. Probably not a bad idea, or you're welcome to leave them in the front, because they kind of summarize everybody. So, and that's the red sections for the next several pages. And then we come to some blue pages. And the blue pages are the items that I mentioned. These are some additional items for consideration. These are the level three kind of cuts. So to start off, we've got the, what we identified initially going into the budget process as some of the board's priorities, things that the board had talked about previously, kind of indicated an interest in, and we wanted to be able to perpetuate those. So we have in there, first of all, the single-family licensing. Very first of all, we've got personal reorganizations. And the personal items are things that have been at least briefly discussed at executive session previously, and obviously personnel are items that would be discussed at future executive sessions as well. So we've got the personal reorganizations to kind of get back to prior year levels of $60,000. And then we've got single-family licensing of the $87,000, as well as offsetting revenue of $87,000. So even if we decide we're not interested in the single-family licensing program, and we want to do something else that doesn't actually save us or get us any closer to getting our $500,000 number, because we've got the same revenue on the other side of it. We identified the cost for the two pop detectives, the crime-free housing, rewriting of the EOC plan, which are all things that have been discussed at committee level that the board had indicated some interest in. And then we have our transfers. And these are the same transfers that we did last year. The first one we have is our transfer of our local motor fuel tax to capital. This year, we're expecting $435,000 in our local motor fuel tax. And last year, there was interest in transferring that amount from the general fund into the capital projects fund. We're assuming we want to do the same thing again. However, in talking with our new auditors, Baker Tilly, they had indicated that some of the items we have previously put in our capital projects fund probably don't belong there accounting-wise. So our community projects, such as our TIF costs and our comprehensive plan costs, they recommended that we move back into the general fund. So our initial assumption was, since last year, we put them in capital projects and transferred motor fuel tax, local motor fuel tax, to cover them, we assumed that when we moved them back to the general fund, we would just transfer that much less motor fuel tax. And obviously, that's still up for the board's consideration, and we can do whatever the board directs. But that's the assumption that we went with at this point. And when we get to community development, we'll go over them in more detail, but they total $146,780. So if we offset those transfers and then include $100,000 transfer to water, that's the amount that we transferred this past year to start paying down the amount that the general fund owes the water fund. So we began making that payment, and this budget assumes that we would continue to make that payment. So all of those items together, including the personnel and all of the items identified as the board priorities, total $661,785. And then we move into the level three cuts. And again, we'll go over these in more detail when we actually get to the individual department. But I just wanted to mention that these items here are not items that the department heads are saying, you know, that they recommend that we should eliminate. They're simply items that, in order to get to the targets that we set, they're items that they identified as potential cuts. And if it's the board's direction, we could cut these and we could survive, but there would definitely be impacts, and, you know, we'd want the board's direction before we decide to make these cuts. So that's the next couple of pages, those blue pages. And again, you may want to pull those out, so you can refer to them as you go through the individual departments. All right. Any questions about the process, about the better blue sheets? At this point? Okay. All right. The next section in here are the transfers. And these transfers here are the same ones that we identified as being part of the board's priorities. It's the repayment of the water receivable. And again, it's noted that this is just sort of for informational purposes. It'll actually hit, it won't actually hit this specific account auditing-wise, it will actually just cover our due-to-do-from accounts. And then the transfer to capital projects. All right. Personnel, again, these are kind of summary from all of them. This kind of goes over and shows, as we have in prior years, sort of the roster that details, I guess that summarizes the detail that's in the other departments. So if there's no question about it this time, we can move on to revenues, tab two. Any questions so far? Okay. All right. Into revenues. So as in prior years, we've kind of put together, our first page is a pie chart kind of showing the different percentages that these revenues we're going to start looking at, you know, how much of our general fund, how much of our village revenues do they make up? As you can see, the majority of it is made up of sales and use tax, not the majority, but the largest portion, 26%. Water sales is a large portion, obviously, it's the major revenue of the water fund. And property tax is also a large portion of it, at 19%. So the next page, we've got the University of Illinois Flash Index. And this is something we started looking at the last couple of years, as we've been looking at sort of the changes in the economy and trying to track them and kind of get a handle on how the economy's going. As you can see, we had the big drop, you know, starting at the beginning of 2007, '08, and then it got to a really big drop in '08, '09. You can see also, on the more positive end, on the last two fiscal years, it's been consistently going up, which is good. We finally hit above 100, just this past month in March. The University of Illinois, the way they rate it and what they consider it, is that 100 is, over 100 is growing. So what they have said as we've been moving up is that we're, our economy is still going down, but it's not going down as fast as it was. Kind of what we have seen in the past few years with our revenues has been kind of an increase the last little bit. So we're basically looking at an economy that is seeming to be improving at least a little bit. I think, you know, in some of the different presentations we've attended, there's been some hesitation to say that it's getting all the way better, but I think the general consensus is that we're doing all right. It's not going to be getting worse at this point. And so the general assumption we've had throughout this budget process with our revenues has been to expect that they'll be probably about as good as we're projecting that they are for this year. So, which is good. This year, we're hitting our budget, we're planning to exceed our budget, so our budgets for most of our revenues will be looking at increasing at least a little bit, which is, which is good. So let's move on and hit our major revenue source, which is sales tax. This chart goes through, and it shows three different types of taxes. We've got our regular sales tax, our local use tax, and our supplemental sales tax, which is the green at the top. As you can see, for 2012, we're projecting to be right about $8 million, and that's a little bit above our budget of $7.7 million. So we're doing really well. Conservatively, we're budgeting down to about $7.9 million. So not quite as high as we're projecting for this year to be conservative, but it's an increase from our prior year's budget, and that's good. It's a positive sign for our sales tax revenues. The next chart gets into a little bit more of the detail of the sales tax. The top chart, the Sales Tax Monthly Comparison, is one that you're very familiar with. This shows the different fiscal years by month, the amount of sales tax we've received. The little green line with the triangles is the one that we're looking at for this current fiscal year. You can see while it started really low in May, for the most part, it's been slightly above the blue with the little asterix, which was last fiscal year, as well as the orange, which was the prior year. And for some of the time, it's even been above the blue, which was 2008, 2009. You can see for the, for one time, and I only, you know, hit it at one point, but you can see, as of December, we in fact went right above our 2007, 2008 range. I don't know that we're going to continue there. I know there was lots of talk about what a great sales season it was this past December, but it's encouraging. It's a good sign, we're doing well, and that's borne out by the budget and by the fact that we're meeting our budget amounts for sales tax, which the second chart illustrates. As you can see, for our base sales tax, we budgeted $6.2 million. We're projecting to receive about $6.4, and so we're budgeting about $6.3. Again, to be a little bit conservative, but it's over our last year's budget, which is, which is a good sign. Any questions on sales tax? So far? Okay. Income tax, which is the next chart, you can see, again, we're exceeding our budget, and based on IML's projections, we're budgeting to be a little bit higher than our last budget, even a little bit higher than our actual. And we are being conservative. As you can see on the chart at the bottom, IML projects that we'll be getting about $80.20 per capita. Our budget is actually based on receiving only about $79 per capita. So to be conservative, we're budgeting a little bit less than IML's recommendation. The next chart shows our several different pieces of utility tax revenue. And for purposes of historical data, we've shown the three different types of revenues that we get from NICOR, ComEd, and Telecom, as well as our budgeted amount. And you can see this year, our project is actually a little bit less than our budget. We had a very mild winter, and I know, I'm sure that that contributed to it. So to be conservative, we're reducing our budget again. The numbers that are on this chart are just our base utility taxes. They do not include an additional $90,000 that we're budgeting for the natural gas use tax. So that's the tax that the board recently approved. If that's included, then our total for utility tax budget actually goes up to $2.6 million, which is the last number in that text. So in that case, we would be a little bit above our last year's budget, once we take into account adding in the natural gas use tax.
Spencer?
Yeah?
Did we ever figure out or have any idea why Telecom is so much lower than previous years?
Yeah, that was the piece that we talked about with Azevare.
Right.
With the utility tax, right?
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah.
The phone tax?
Yeah. Because in previous years, it's been considerably higher. And then, you know, like in 2010, 2010, it drops, you know, pretty significantly. I just wondered if it was because people are getting rid of landlines.
Well, that's part of it.
You know?
That's part of it.
But it's a lot. I mean, it's a pretty big difference.
Yeah. In 2010, they all sort of dropped a little bit, and we understood ComEd, we understood NICOR. Well, we didn't understand NICOR until Azevare explained it to us, but I think Telecom is still the mystery as to why it dropped back in 2010.
But I think that's part of the...
You think that's part of it?
Yeah.
Landlines.
Could it be that much, you think?
We don't even use ours anymore, so it's the basic fee that comes in, and that's all it's for a few people that call us, other than that.
People are either getting rid of it, or some of the carriers are actually offering smaller minute plans at lower prices for your landline. So, Spencer, I want to go back.
Yeah.
And, you know, you were talking about the income tax for a minute. Did we account in here for the backlog of money that's owed to us by the state?
Yes. Our, the projected amount assumes that the state's going to finish paying us what they owe us for this fiscal year.
Just for the board's information, IML's got this wonderful calculator that they put on their site to allow communities across the state to go on there, figure out how much the state owes you, and then, you know, just simply sending emails to your legislators to remind them of how much is owed. We're currently owed, going back all the way to November of last calendar year, over $650,000 by the state. So I just wanted to mention that that's something IML's doing across the state to try to continue to remind our legislators, you know, the state needs to pay their bills and get their money to us that they owe us.
Very good.
It's a pretty sizable number, big number.
It's a lot of money.
Hope it comes with interest.
Yeah, right.
All right. Moving on to hotel motel taxes. We can see, again, we can see kind of the typical drop that happened, and then that we're again picking up from it. The last couple of years, we've been consistently over our budget, which is, again, a good sign. Conservatively, we're budgeting to be a little bit under that, $552,000, which is, again, above our previous budget, a little bit below our projected amount. So again, we're happy with this good signs, but we're trying to still be conservative with our budget. And then, on a little bit less happy note, is our state motor fuel tax. And you'll see that this one, our current budget is actually higher than what we're actually projecting, based on some changes the state did. IML had to end up reducing their estimate. And so now, based on IML's estimate, we expect to get about $607,000, as opposed to $634 we were anticipating. And then based on their newest estimate of 2410, we are expecting to get about $592,000 in this coming year. So that one is a little bit less encouraging, but we're budgeting forward and going to make it work. The next page goes over some, over our water revenues. One thing that you will notice, we've got our water fund pie chart, we've got our water sales, which make up a large portion of it, we've got our infrastructure fee, which is something that we looked at last year to try to make sure that we could cover our different infrastructure needs, and we're bringing in about $1.6 million each year with that. You will also notice, as you look at the chart, right away that there's a huge jump in our budget in 2012 and then 2013. And the reason for that jump is when we initially went into our budget, we had an idea of what DuPage Water Commission might be raising the rate, and we thought they were going to raise it all at once at the beginning of the fiscal year. Turns out that they only raised it a little bit at the beginning of the fiscal year, and then they had a larger, you know, a larger portion of their increase happened in January. So our budget for 2012, it assumed it was going to happen the whole year, and it only happened a portion of the year, which is a good thing. We're happy that we didn't have to pay the higher rate earlier, but, so our revenues and also our expenses are under budget. Because we didn't have to pay for the higher amount, our expenses are under budget, and because we didn't pass on the higher amount to our customers, then our revenues are also under budget there. For this current year in 2013, we now have from DuPage Water Commission a better estimate as to when the increases are going to be going into effect, and based on the information they've given us, we're projecting that it will be that 6.4. So it's significantly higher than our actual projected because of the time that the increase went into effect. Any questions on? Okay. The next section is our property tax section. And as you're well aware, we levy property tax each year. And the first chart shows our assessed valuation. As you can see, in levy year 2009, which equates to fiscal year 2011, our equalized assessed valuation started to go down, then it had a big drop of 6.4% in levy year 10, which is fiscal year 2011, 2012. And then this past levy year in 2011, the preliminary numbers from the county are that it's dropping 2.94%. So we know that property values and the assessments are on a three-year rolling average, and so, you know, it's, the fact that it's increasing less is encouraging. We're glad that it's not, excuse me, that we're decreasing less is encouraging. We're glad that we're not still seeing the negative 0.6% decrease. We may have another year or two of some slight decreases, but hopefully, we've seen the worst of the decrease in our equalized assessed value. You can see on the next page, we've got our overall tax rate history. And as you can see there, the tax rate was kind of going down, and then it went up significantly in 2009, 2010. And that was, as you're well aware, the time when the board made the decision to begin funding the police pension at the levels required by the actuary. That's since been passed into a law that now we are required legally to, we will be required in the next couple of years to fund that at those levels. The board made a proactive decision to begin doing that, to start taking care of some of the deficit positions and the underfunding that have been happening previously. And that was the increase in those tax rates at that point. And then additionally, the fact with EAV going down, it artificially inflates the tax rate, because as revenues stay the same, the tax rate goes up. And as the board's well aware, for this 2011 levy, we maintained all of our revenues, we levied revenues at the very same rate as the county had extended the previous year, with the single exception of the property tax for police pension. And so that went to go at 105% of the prior year's annual required contribution. The other revenues maintained the same for the village operating revenues. And so the increase in tax rate is the artificially increased rate based on the EAV being reduced. The next page then shows the revenue, and you can see the revenue increase this past year was only 1.6%. And again, that was due to the police pension increase. And then you can see a pie chart that breaks out the different pieces of our property tax and what percentage goes to which category. Any questions on property taxes? The next section goes into a lot, a lot of detail on the different revenues. And the revenues are repeated here twice. We've got the first section, which is listed by department. So if you're interested in a specific revenue that applies to a specific department, you can find it in this first section by department. And then, if you turn, you find the next one, which is, says revenue by source. And then you can find it, if you're looking for a tax, you can find a tax, a fee, and fees, licenses, et cetera. So we'll kind of move on past those unless there's any questions on any specific questions on our revenues. Questions on any of the stuff we've gone over so far? All right. For the general fund. So we're going to go to administration now. We've got... We've got some... We're going to be doing a little bit of hopping around in the budget. We've got different department heads that have different schedules, so we want to make sure that we can accommodate all of them and have them present at the time that, you know, go over their department at the time when they're actually here. So let's turn to administration department, the HR and administration, and that is... It's under tab three. You can see it's one of the orange pages. It goes to the second to last orange page. Last one was finance, and the one before that is administration, human resources and administration. All right, so all the departments you'll see will be set up very similarly. After the orange page, there'll be a chart section where you can see the history, and then you can also see a breakdown of what's currently in the budget. You'll see in here, for HR and administration, that the majority of it is taken up with salaries and benefits, which is not surprising. There's, you know, a little bit of professional services, a little bit of dues and subscriptions, but majority of it is the amounts in the salaries and benefits. The second page in here is our budget variance report, which you'll recall from prior years is if an account changes by 10% and at least $1,000, it shows up on here with a little bit of description as to what ended up happening. So just briefly on here, you can see one of the changes that happened was, at the beginning of last year's budget, the anticipation was that administration would continue to share a full-time employee with clerks, and that they would also have a part-time employee in administration. Since then, it has changed, and the part-time employee is no longer with us, and so instead, the full-time employee is now full-time in administration. So there's a little bit of shift from regular to part-time, those kind of things. And then there's kind of some minor changes there. But I'd also like to kind of call your attention to the red sheets, which are the preliminary cuts. You can see some of the changes that got made in administration. And the administrations are the ones that are the numbers beginning with 51210. So you can see postage was reduced a little bit. You can see that there was initially a request for document conversion, which would be able to move some of our files out of MicroFiche and get them a little bit easier to access format. That was something that ended up being identified as something that could be removed at this point. And then there was the calendar printing, which is not... This item here is not any change in the calendar. It's just to bring it down to more accurately reflect the cost that it actually is, based on decisions that have been made in previous years. So those are some of the cuts that were identified as the level-two cuts. And then you can see on level three, the blue sheets, there's also some things that are identified as items, again, items for consideration. So the Board may choose to consider these or may choose to not consider them, and that we just continue to keep them in the budget. But they're identified as things that could be considered. So there's the newsletter production, the newsletter printing, and calendar printing. So these are just things that the Board, you know, again, could consider within this budget. Obviously, the Board's willing to consider anything within the budget. Line item detail is there. I don't know if you have any specific questions at this point for Kathy or Ron that they could answer, but I don't know if there's any questions in here at this point.
No, on those items, those are... You've got those combined together with legislation and clerks?
Yes, legislation, clerks, and human resources administration kind of combined together as one department. Sort of the general governmental functions are all listed in the level cuts together. Yeah, just like, you know, other departments are kind of listed as groups of departments, you know, all of police is listed as one, and then it's simply identified based on the number. Okay, no questions there. Let's move on to the fire department, which is tab number six. I'm sorry, we skipped IT. Thank you. So let's move back to IT, which is in the third tab under... The third orange sheet under tab number three, which is information technology. So it's a couple before administration. All right. So again, we've got the pie chart. As you can see, you know, a large portion, again, like all the departments, a large portion is covered in salaries and benefits. Obviously, because it's IT, there's also a large cost in computer licensing, and IT now has, as it has for the last several years, our village-wide landline service, our village-wide VOP service. You can see on the budget variance that we're looking at, for health insurance, we're looking at a desktop technician, kind of moving from a temp, which is our current situation. Since Mike Funk retired, we've had a temp working for us, and this budget, you know, provides for moving that temp to a full-time employee. In general, it's cost neutral with, you know, the reduction in professional services, but health insurance had a significant change because it's now up primarily to cover that position.
Well, the previous employee did not elect health coverage from us, so I'm guessing that's probably why it's up as well, correct?
Yes, yep. You can see in main and service equipment, which is one of the accounts that changed significantly from last year, the reason that it looks like it's down this year was that last year it was a little bit higher because we had to produce... We had to replace the UPS battery at police, and that's not in this year's budget because it was already taken care of. In the level-two cuts, you'll see this postponed virtualization and computer replacement. IT has been for the last couple of years moving forward with in-client and virtualization and trying to use these as some desktop replacements, and we've had to postpone some of that this year in order to meet the budget cuts that we needed to do. And then the other increase that you'll notice on this variance report is the village website hosting, which is something that the Board discussed, and we're moving forward on it, and we're making good progress with getting a new website, and that's an increase in there. Again, you'll see on the red sheets, you'll see the items that IT cut. So it's on the back of the first page, so if you take the first page and turn it up, you'll see the items for information technology, the items that they cut there. You'll also see on the blue sheet, some of the items that are listed as potential reductions. And one thing that was identified as potential reduction, if we needed to, would be to postpone the MDT computer replacements in the police vehicles, as well as potentially eliminate the downtown sound system. Again, these are at the Board's direction. We could do these, and we'd still make it, but things that we'd want the Board's input on that. I don't know if you want to talk at all about the MDT computer replacements and...
Yeah, then one other clarification, too, just for the telephone. That not only just includes the voice-over IP, but that's also all the data circuits that the village uses for police and fire radio communication, along with the internet connection for the village as well. So it's not just dial-up telephone, that is all the communications. The wireless modems are in the police and fire vehicles as well, so.
Right. Thank you.
As far as the MDT computer replacement, most of the MDTs are already a year behind a general replacement schedule of five years, which is long for a computer. So we have been replacing them. Every year, we do have... There's... This is half of what, right? We pulled half over.
Yes.
So I looked in, but we do have five in there for next year, which will allow us to finish up the replacements at police and start replacing at fire, but it is five less than our normal MDT replacement schedule of about 10 a year.
Any IT questions at this point? All right, thanks. All right, now we'll move to the fire department, which is tab number six. So tab number six, the first sheet is fire protection, and this is fairly standard. This is the 2% fire insurance tax that we get, and we get the money, and then we immediately turn it over to the fire board, which oversees this account and this fund, and they spend it as they choose to. So we have it coming in as a revenue, we have it going out as an expense. At the end of the year, we'll true it up and see what we actually expense, but it's not any money that we can use, so we, at this point, just kind of focus on coming in and going out. All right, suppression and control.
Which money are you talking about?
For the fire protection, about $25,000. So the fire protection money is not identified on any of the red or the blue sheets, because it's money that, you know, we as the village board don't have any control over.
Sort of just a pass-through, right?
Yeah.
We just collect it and give it away.
Collect it and give it right to them. Yep, so that's the $25,000 that's there. Moving on to suppression and control, again, you'll see that a large portion of the budget is for salaries and benefits, but there's also some money in here for grant expenses, which we'll go over, and then some equipment, maintenance, and supplies. You know, as you can see, these different pieces that are here. Fire suppression and control, you'll see that the first couple of items are based on the fact that, as you know, we're down an employee in the fire department. Right now, we've got an acting fire chief as opposed to a deputy chief. Some of the changes that hit professional services, one large portion of it, again, is that last year's was higher than usual because we had the reaccreditation site visit, and additionally, we're looking at postponing medical testing, kind of to try to push it off, so it doesn't hit in next fiscal year, but hits in the year after that. We have an increase in telephone for the VHF repeater lines. Utilities are being reduced just to more accurately reflect expenditures, and then other equipment has an increase in narrowband pagers. Following here is the detail, and I wanted to specifically turn your attention to a couple of pages in. We've got the count that is state grants and federal grant expenses. So it's two, three, four... It's on the fourth page going on to the fifth page. I just wanted to, you know, call your attention to the grants that are here, that the fire department is diligently working on getting these grants. One thing that I did want to mention is we've got, listed under federal grant expense, we've got the Zoll cardiac monitors, and these are... We're hoping to get the grant to be able to replace these monitors, which are... Could really use repair. And you will notice as a level-two cut in the fire department on the red sheet, that these items are listed as a level-two cut, that if we don't get the grant, we may not be replacing them. And, you know, so just wanted to call your attention to that. They're in the budget, they're listed as a grant, but what has been proposed is, you know, if we don't get them, then... We don't get the grant, we wouldn't replace it, and we would hope that they don't go Again, you can see they're level-two cuts, and you'll notice that they've got quite a few of the level-one and the level-two cuts. You'll notice they've got a whole lot of cuts listed under training. In the budget, it just shows one total dollar amount for training, but they wanted to be able to present to the Board sort of the breakdown, the detail, on the different types of training that were initially requested. Last year, the budget was kind of indicated that we may want to consider increasing some of our training for next year. That was the direction they initially took and, you know, what they were attempting to do. And then you can see here the changes that they ended up making to be able to reach their cuts. So you'll see here, along with all the others, there's the original request amount, which was what their original request of the revised amount, and then the dollar amount for the reduction. And if you go through and add up all the training revised amounts, you'll see it will match the total training in here, but in the detailed budget breakdown, they didn't want to, you know, necessarily go to the level of listing all of these individually. But you have them here for your review if you have any questions about them, about any of the cuts that are listed here.
Spencer, I wanted to ask you... Go back to the question the trustee Fleming had about the transfer tax or the fire insurance tax?
Yes.
Yes, it is a pass-through, but I believe statutorily, they're required to provide a budget report annually to the Board in terms of how that money is spent.
Okay.
I don't know if that was a concern any of the Board members have, but I assume that report historically goes to the fire chief, so it's available upon request if you have any interest in knowing how that funding is spent. I know way back in the early 1980s, that was when the law was changed, which required us to pass the money directly on through to the fire insurance board or association board that they created.
I just wanted to mention about the... We did have some level-three cuts, but for some reason, it didn't get into the Google system. Yeah, those are...
Yes, I believe that the... That your level-three cuts you identified were dealing with personnel, and they're ones that are discussed at the executive session.
Okay.
Yes, but you did identify level-three cuts. They are part of that purple line at the bottom that says personnel. Any questions for fire on any of the cuts, any of the additional information? All right. We are making good progress.
Sweet.
All right, moving on to police department. You will see from the pie chart there that for the police department, about 50% goes to salaries and benefits, and the reason that's smaller than many of the other departments is you can see 33% goes to police dispatch consolidation. And so the police dispatch consolidation actually ends up paying salaries for the dispatchers over at Downers Grove, but because we're paying it to Downers Grove rather than to people, it's not listed under salaries and benefits. You will notice that this year is a change in that we've got police dispatch consolidation listed under the police department administration. In previous years, we had all dispatch costs listed under police department communications. We had all the salaries of our telecommunications, and all those related costs were in that division of the police department. This year, it was determined that because that division has been simplified so significantly, it would just make more sense to report it all under the police department administration. So you will see lots... As you look through the budget, you'll see lots of times, especially under personnel, where it looks like the budget increased dramatically from the prior year, and that's because they're consolidating two different divisions. The police dispatch consolidation, the number we have in there right now is an estimate from Downers Grove. We are meeting with them and going to be firming that up, and we'll be, you know, clarifying that number a little bit as well. The line chart that shows the cost increase and decrease kind of over time, the historical trend, includes both administration and communications, so you can see that it does, in fact, go down over time. All right. The next page shows the budget variance report, and again, as you can see, we've looked at... We moved from police communications, that's why the regular wages went up 61%. This budget does include a request for part-time records... This budget does include a request for part-time records clerk, and so that's listed in there as a request, and that can be discussed a little bit more at executive sessions with personnel. Health insurance increased because we moved from communications. Professional services is another example of some outsourcing, where now our crossing guards are now paid for as a contractual service. So it's in here in professional services, and you'll see when we get to patrol, that it's a decrease in their wages. And then the next couple items are ones which, again, look like they're much lower this year because last year was higher with the evidence room repairs, as well as the replacement Our grant expenses are some, is something that we have moved to the federal drug account. You will notice as you go through the budget that there's been lots of things that have been moved from the regular operating department into the federal drug account. And these are items that are not necessarily expenses that we had last year that were moved to, you know, cover the federal drug account, but they're, you know, funding some additional expenses or purchasing some new equipment. We're funding it through the federal drug account rather than the operating account to try to save Village some money, that it would have to do if we'd chosen to put it in the operating budget instead. You can see a portion of due mag is paid from the state drug account, as we did in previous years. A couple of years ago, we put the entire amount into the state drug account. This year, we're only putting a portion because that's what we have in the state drug account. Any, any questions so far, police? Okay. Again, like the other departments, you can see that they have listed their level one and two and three cuts. You'll notice, again, on several of these cuts in level one and level two, that the impact, the notes will say, transferred to federal drug account. And so that's what we've talked about, that it's being moved to the federal drug account to cover those items. Police has some things, they're postponing equipment, some things that they're, you know, looking at cutting. You can look at all those. And then the level three cuts that police have identified includes that part-time records clerk that we looked at earlier, so that could be listed as a level three cut, as well as some range repairs, defibrillators, AR-15 rifles. And you can kind of go through and look. And then kind of at the bottom of their, towards the bottom of their level three cuts on that first page of the level three cuts, they identify some overtime wages that we could do, you know, we could eliminate days at Westmont, holidays, Fourth of July, those participation, those events, if, if it's the board's desire to do that. Any questions on police at this point? All right. So next item on the agenda is legislation, which is turning back to tab three, and now we're sort of starting over at tab three. All right. Legislation is one of the accounts where, as you'll notice, salaries and benefits is a very small portion of it. So it's just the compensation for the board members and the marriage included in here. You can see the large portion of this is liability insurance and legal fees. You know, and there's several other small little pieces that are, that are also there. Looking at the budget variance report, there's not a lot of changes. You can see we transferred some things from the training account to the expense account, kind of to be consistent, more consistent with the way we do other departments and where we code things, so we just made that transfer. And then the one major increase that you will see in here is the holiday expenses for total $25,000. And we also have a $2,500 increase for the health and wellness committee that was, there was a discussion at a previous committee about including a little bit of money for the health and wellness committee to be able to continue their work, and so that's included under legislation. But if we turn in legislation to the miscellaneous services account, which is almost the end of legislation, it's the second to last page under miscellaneous services. So we, first time that Christmas decoration shows up is the first item there for $2,000. That's kind of just the minimal fee, kind of keep doing what we did this past year. And then down at the bottom, you'll see some large dollar amounts, some additional requests. The downtown Westmont Business Alliance had approached us and asked us to consider putting lights on the wreaths, and so we looked at what it would take to kind of go back to previous years. As you recall, in this past year's budget, we didn't put aside any money for the wreaths or anything on the downtown decoration side. So in the year before that, we had done wreaths on every other pole, which, to go back to that level, would cost about $6,000. If we were to go back to the level of where we had wreaths on every pole, then we would be looking at an additional $10,000 for total of $16,000. And then if we were to add lights and ribbons, it's another $9,000. So if we pay for all of those things, then the total cost would be, we're looking at about that $25,000. So that would be to do wreaths on every pole, as well as lights and ribbons on every pole.
Well, okay. But trust me, I don't know about the rest of you, but I took a lot of grief over that one last year, over the holidays, over nothing being on the poles. Took a lot of heat for it.
Same with the flowers. Grief on that, too.
The question comes to play here. I know that we had asked the Park District if they could supply some more stuff, and I know that there was plenty of stuff left over in that storage area that wasn't used for the holidays. But here's the question. Why do we have to buy live greenery? Villages all around us have purchased reusable-type greenery. Has anybody, have, have, who in our...
We talked about that.
Talked about it.
We talked about that last year.
Yeah. Who would be able to get us some pricing on that?
I don't know if it was the pricing or the problem of the storage.
Storage was the issue.
Storage has always been the issue for us.
Well...
Maybe Steve wants to come, comment on it. It's something we've talked about.
Many times.
Up and on for a number of years.
That was one issue. I really wasn't prepared to answer that, so we don't have any current pricing, but the last time we looked into it, I mean, my memory is, is it's triple to quadruple the cost it takes to do the live greenery. So it'll be like five years before you get your return back, and that doesn't include the ability to store all this from year to year, and then nothing happening to it each season, too. So there's probably a little bit of addition. So, you know, the rate of return was in excess of five years to do it that way.
What about...
And that's even if you like those decorations and you continue to reuse them, you know?
What about renting them? The way you can do on homes now, where there's these, these companies that'll come out and decorate your house, and then they go, they come at the end of the year and they take them all, or, you know, after Christmas, and they take it all away. Is there anything like that for municipalities?
I have no idea. It's nothing we've ever looked into.
Something we really have to look into because it looked like we were closed for business.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, the Park District did give us a lot of things here, but I think the issue with not being able to use them downtown was the electricity and the space on the sidewalk because they're so big, there's really no place to put them. But we did have, you know, a couple of things at Westmont Center and right here at the...
Along the tracks.
Along the tracks and on the other side.
Want to come down and take their kids for rides to come look at all the lights and the stuff to see, and if you don't have it downtown, they're not going to be coming down.
We have to go through the dark downtown to get to Mary Egan. It doesn't make sense. It's just like in the summer with, you know, no flowers, no nothing. It looks like, it looks like we're closed. You're right, it looks like we're closed.
It costs to do business, unfortunately, and you have to spend it sometimes just to get them to attract them to come down here.
Exactly, exactly.
So the question is...
Well, we've got it in the budget. I say let's just work to leave it in there. I mean, it's in there now, so...
So it's, it's in the budget. It's also listed as potential level three cuts. Each of those different pieces are, so if you wanted to cut to some level, you could, or you could just leave it all in, whatever board discretion.
Need to leave it in there.
So that's the major things identified on there as level three cuts. And then the only thing listed on there is a level one or two cut was simply trimming the amount we budget for legal fees to more accurately meet the actual costs. So that's been the major change in legislation was including those holiday decorations.
Okay, as it stands right now, how many calendars we still got left around?
How many...
How many calendars do we still have left? From the printing.
You know, Pat asked that question at the end of the calendar year, and I had a number, and I don't recall what it was. And I'm sure it's one of...
I remember you giving us that number.
Yeah, it was in the Friday report, I think.
You're right, Ron. It was addressed at the beginning of this year, actually. I think trustee Scott may have actually brought that up to see how we were doing in relation to our cutbacks with the calendar based on the Citizens Finance Committee recommendations a couple of years ago. And we did not have much in the way of leftovers that had to be tossed. It was, if I recall, only about two boxes, so it was pretty close. And as a matter of fact, it warranted the reorder for the same quantity going forward for this calendar year.
And Carrie, wasn't that some do, some of it due to the overrun that they give us?
Yes, you're correct.
They, we order X and we get XX.
Yeah.
Because of the way the printer works and stuff.
You're exactly right. If you, you can't just order 8,500, they'll round up to 9,000, something like that.
But we don't pay for it. I mean, we get extras.
That's correct.
Free of charge.
Yeah, there's benchmarks with pricing and quantities, and so that's where we saw a good, how would you say, best fit for the situation.
I think our conclusion was we were pretty...
We were right on the money.
Yeah.
You know, you're not going to be exact.
Yeah, there was not very much spoilage, actually.
Carrie, do we know how many boxes the printer keeps at his location?
That I don't know.
Maybe I should call and find out.
I didn't even realize he had any at his location.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure if we get them all to what we're here, or if Richard keeps any there, so...
Well, I talked with Larry McIntyre, and I think he had an understanding of how much was available, so I...
That's an interesting thing she brings up, just to make sure.
Yeah, we should double check.
We were having stored and brought over as we needed, but again, I think...
We take delivery over the course of the year, and this is what was left at the end of the year.
Right, that's, that was my understanding.
They're just storing it on there, not...
But we're sure we got everything.
Well, I, I'm not sure a lot of it.
The one thing I...
Wordings.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
I think they just took boxes of calendars and just put them in certain departments. The fire department got a bunch of boxes, the police department. I don't know if they really needed all those boxes because I heard a remark going on, what are we supposed to do with all these calendars? And I know at the fire department, one of the things was Lynn Drouly happened to be going to Mays Lake, and I heard her say, oh, I'm going to take a case to Mays Lake. So that was kind of nice, but it sounded like maybe we should be checking with the departments before the actual count and see how many do they really want? If it's one for each employee, or, you know, let them say, I need 100 for my employees or something. And then, you know, see if we're, you know, are they just handing them out, or...
Are you, are you talking about at the beginning of the process, at the beginning of...
Yeah, when, when they first came in, they had, they, I guess they just sent boxes over. Is that not correct? Boxes just went to all different departments and...
I believe Larry McIntyre was distributing them to different departments with, of course, Village Hall hosting the majority.
Yeah, and I know there were several boxes in the downstairs of the fire department.
Not just for employees' use, though. I mean, we put them out on the counter in both buildings, and they're, they're taken throughout the year.
But that's what I need to know, is, are we overstocking the burden on some of the departments by giving them too much, or...
Public works.
So I...
I have this thing about the price, too. If we order less and the price goes up...
Right.
Are we at the same amount? I mean, you know, dollar-wise, are we looking at, we're spending less, or more money, we're spending more money for less calendars.
Less amount, so...
Exactly.
Yeah.
And we did get a cost break.
So we could have a couple, we could have a couple, 200, 300 left over.
Right.
But we've spent the same, yeah, exactly.
But it was still the same. I know it was nice that Lynn took a box over to Mays Lake, it's just that, you know, it sounded like maybe, you know, some departments might have been just giving too many boxes.
I think that was always our intent when we talked about cutting back, that we, we knew that would be an audience for that, try to get it to some of the seniors center.
Yeah, but it sounded like it was just off the top of the head that, oh, I know what I can do. I happen to be going there tomorrow, bring it. It didn't sound like it was a planned thing, I'm going to bring it. It was like, oh, we got all these calendars, I might as well bring some over to Mays Lake.
Maybe she didn't realize it was planned, but I think it was part of her committee discussion.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is maybe we better make sure it's, maybe people know exactly what they're supposed to be doing with the calendars, too. I like the idea of going to Mays Lake, that was a very good idea.
But then Larry could drop them off there themselves instead of waiting for the fire department to bring them over.
Any other questions, legislation, administration, these stuff we've gone through so far? All right, moving on to clerk's office.
Can I just point out one thing? You know, it's easy to overlook, but we have the $700 there for the Memorial Day Parade. And we had agreed last year, the year before, we would keep that grant in there. And I know every year, the Park District asks about it, they did again this year, and I assured them that that was a priority last year, so I'm assuming we're continuing that for the, for the veterans, so just wanted to point that out.
I think it's a no-brainer.
That's what I assume.
Right, clerk's office. Again, the major cost here is salaries and benefits. And then there's also a printing cost predominantly for our municipal code costs. You will notice on this salary history that, you know, it has decreased last several years and it continued to decrease. You'll see on the budget variance report, a, a good chunk of that decrease came from, as a result of the same personnel change that we discussed about how administration was initially planning to have their full-time employees shared with clerks. That has shifted, so that employee is now working full-time in administration, and so finance's part-time employee is now being shared with clerks. And so, again, you see the offsetting change from wages regular to wages part-time here in clerks. And then the other thing that hit here was just, again, trying to more accurately reflect current expenditures. You will notice on this proposed budget that there are no level one, level two, or level three cuts for the clerk's division, and that is because, you know, we established our targets based on a decrease from the previous year's budget, and the clerk's department initially, on their very first submittal, had already decreased and had already met their, the targets. And so there's no additional cuts because they'd already come in significantly less than last year. As you can see, looking down at the bottom, the very last page, last year, their budget was $173,000. They're now requesting only $167,000, which is a large percentage decrease for such a small department. So that's why you won't see them listed on level one, two, or three. Any questions there?
Thank you, clerk Shewski and staff.
Yeah, can't cut what you can't cut if there's nothing to cut.
Yeah, was already cut before the initial submission. And likewise, you will notice with the different departments kind of on that same line that, you know, some departments have higher amounts listed under cuts, even once you add into, take into consideration the amounts listed in personnel. So first of all, you know, some of the cuts that are identified are personnel, so they're not listed here as level one, two, or three. You'll also notice that some departments cut more, some departments cut less, and it was, the targets that we set up were based on a percentage of their previous budget. So the small departments had, didn't have to cut as much as the large departments, and those that cut less were also those who had already cut kind of on their own before their initial submittal. So just wanted to make sure I mentioned that.
To be honest, the one that really goes through it and figures out where he can cut is, is Carrie. He does an outstanding job.
Absolutely.
I give him full credit. He does fine.
Thank you, Carrie.
All right, the next item on the agenda is finance, but since we're here at community development, let's just go along with that one. So right after, so we've got clerks, right after that comes IT, and then comes community And you will see in community development, again, a large portion is in salaries and benefits, and the two other large pieces are professional services, which... benefits, and the two other large pieces are professional services, which for the most part represent our contractors. Don Morris is a very large component of that. And then we've got something that we've labeled "community projects," and that's the item that I mentioned at the very beginning, which is some of the projects that were initially funded in the Capital Projects Fund, and upon advice of our auditors, we are now moving them into the general fund. And so, you will see, looking at the budget expense history this year, it just skyrocketed because of that $146,000, which has historically been in the Capital Projects Fund. So, looking into here, you can see kind of the changes. The first three are all part of, are all more personnel changes. We've got the single-family licensing program that we talked about, and then sort of the reorganization of the department. The one reduction that you will see on this budget variance report is a reduction in training, and that reduction was to be able to meet the targets that were identified. There was that reduction in training. And then, the $146,000 increase is a community project. So let's go to that one, it's the last page in community development. And these community projects are composed of several different pieces. The first one that's listed on here is the second half of the comprehensive plan. This is a carryover, it was budgeted last year in capital projects, and we're estimating, we've got about $55,000 left to spend on that piece of the comprehensive plan. There's, identified in the contract with the comprehensive plan are a couple of additional options that, at the board's discretion, they may want to consider, and those are identified here as development visualization and design development guidelines for $9,000 and $12,000. And I'm not sure what the board's preference is with regards to these, but these are items that the board could consider looking at, and we could, you know, determine which of these we're interested in pursuing. We also have for right now, the Southwestmont Business District TIF, as well as the Central Business District TIF. We've got the remaining, estimated remaining amount that we've got left to pay out for our TIF was about $10,000. And then there's, again, some additional options that we may want to consider from our TIF consultant of perform analysis and review of development agreements. All of these TIF costs are items that, once a TIF is established, that the increment from the TIF can then reimburse the general fund. So at this point, because we don't have the TIF established yet, because we don't have the revenue in the TIF to fund this, we have to pay for it out of the general fund, but then we will get reimbursed, assuming we go forward with the TIF. The board would have the option to reimburse, I mean, it's not required, but we certainly could do that. So we've got that, and then the Central Business District TIF of $47,500, listed in there for the analysis there for it. Any questions on those community projects and the move capital projects to here?
Ron, I have a question dealing with the home rule scenario. Now, granted, the comment is that we're supposed to put it on the general election in November, but if we're still under, okay, but if we're still under review for the census, why would we have to put it on there if we still don't have an answer?
Because that's what the law says, it has to go at the general fund, I mean, the general election.
So then, let's say that it is...
What happens?
What, okay, say it's turned down. So now, what does that do to the multi-housing, the funding there, and all those different items? What does that do?
What's it do to the appeal?
Well, that's another question, too, and that's one that John and I have discussed. I know that's something he's still researching. We're not sure that there's any kind of case law out there on that type of scenario. My understanding from what he's provided so far is any actions that you've taken while a home rule community are valid actions.
It will stay.
But, you know, that's still, you know, subject to challenge.
Because, I mean, that could make a big difference in the budget. So we really don't have a definite answer at this point.
To the first part of the question? Which is, the question that you're asking is separate. What happens if the referendum question fails, and then you win the appeal?
Do we start the process all over again?
We're not sure. I think John's opinion is that we do have a very strong argument that the referendum is invalid. That's what he told me the other day. But that's still a question that he wanted a little more time to research. If the referendum fails, and we've got these other act, these things that we've taken action on, you know, the legal opinions that I've seen to date, and John's, you know, is still researching, some pieces of it is that those actions are valid. Now, you may want to roll back or change some of that stuff, though.
But they stay in place, even though home rule isn't, we don't have it anymore.
We have, we have to treat certain things going forward differently.
Right.
And how much revenue do we lose?
I don't know, Spencer, do we have a total on those numbers?
How much revenue do we lose?
Quite a bit.
If we go to a non-home rule status versus...
How much would we have to shift back and, yeah?
Right. Because we don't get as much...
Right. I know that's a question Spencer and I have talked about, I don't know if we have a handy number tonight, but we can have that information for you on Saturday.
Revenue's one thing, but quality of living conditions in the apartment buildings is, I think, a far more important thing.
Oh, I agree.
Because then what happens is then, the better conditions we have, of course, the better attraction we have, for a better resident, quality resident coming in, and the riffraff would be leaving. But if we're can't able to do that anymore, then I think the residents have to understand that this is just going to put the village, can, put it in a direction we don't want to go.
Well, it...
This is very important for the future of our community.
Right, I mean, it serves that purpose, too, but it also is going to take away revenue that we were getting, that we're not going to get anymore, that's going to put us even into more of a situation.
The revenue that we're going to not be getting, though, is based on population, correct?
Not all of it.
If anything that's in place, it's the opinion that it stays.
Some has already been reduced because of our certified population.
Right, but it's based on the population.
You're asking the total number, and that, you know, we can, I don't know if you know that, Spencer?
There's, there's a couple of different pieces of it. The first one is hotel motel taxes, which we can use in the general fund because we are home rule. If we revert to non-home rule status...
Can't use it anymore.
We can't use it in the general fund.
Then it's just tourism.
It would be tourism. And right now, we've got about 500,000, 550,000 of that, that we know for sure would move to tourism. But we've also got about $100,000 worth of, $100,000, $150,000 worth of expenses in the general fund that we could probably shift back to tourism that used to come from tourism. So we've probably got a net of about $400,000 that we know we would lose for hotel motel taxes on an annual basis, and then...
Wouldn't lose it.
We wouldn't lose it.
It's just going in a different bucket.
We'd lose it from the general fund, right, right. The general fund would be reduced.
We could only spend it on...
Right, that's, it just goes in a different bucket, is what I'm saying.
Right, but the thing is, we could only spend it on things like the taste of Westmont, we could only spend it on, you know...
Tourism, period, tourism and...
We could not use any of those funds to help offset...
Right.
Any of our village services, any of those items.
And by your calculation, that's about 350,000, 400,000, that would be?
Yeah, probably 400,000, 450,000, that would be moved from that piece alone. And then there's sort of, I guess, another section of revenue that's, I think John is still researching on this piece as well, which would be the items that we enacted under home rule, such as the supplemental sales tax, which is about 1.2 million, and primarily goes to fund the vehicle replacement program, and our local motor fuel tax, which is about 430,000.
But at this time, it's his opinion that that stays, correct?
And he and I have talked about the timing of all this, and I think our thought is, we get the budget passed, I think we need to, you know, begin preparation for that referendum in November. You know, we can't advocate a position, but we can certainly educate the residents as to the impact on services. So I think we need to set up, you know, some type of a citizens group that will help get that information out of the community. That's next November, we're going to be, start planning into the next budget year that we're going to make some of the major adjustments if the referendum doesn't pass.
Well, and I mean, I think maybe some of the new groups that have been formed, I mean, the Renaissance, the downtown Renaissance group...
They'd be a great group for that.
Get them out there with this, get them out in front of this thing. I mean...
They'd be really...
But we can't do this alone, even with, we need other boards.
Right.
We need the whole village. We need the library, we need the, we need them all.
They've all got to understand, they've got to understand what this is going to do in the long run, if...
That's going to be a major project for the summer.
Yeah, I mean...
How soon do you have to put it, how much time do you need to get it on the ballot? When do you need to?
Oh, gosh, we've got plenty of time to do that. Yeah, I think it's probably in August.
What would happen if we wouldn't put it on there?
August, September, you need to start?
I think, yeah, August, if I remember right.
Might be a challenge to it.
What would happen if we didn't put it on?
I would recommend that you do put it on.
We'd be in violation.
I don't, I don't think, it's a question, I don't think we want to not put it on.
Not an option.
I'm just asking.
I don't think John would advise that you not put it on. I think we have to put it on, that's the opinion that it is.
Well, yeah, I mean, we need to, we need to find a way for the public to understand what they're facing here.
Well, just show them what happened in Rockford, when they lost home rule.
I don't think there's a village that's ever passed it with a referendum, is there, Ron?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Warrenville did it, Lake Forest did it a number of years ago.
Didn't Downers vote it upside down, two to one, after the Downers Grove?
No.
Didn't they put it on the vote for it?
They tried to take it off.
They had some discussions about it, but they haven't lost home rule. The only community that I'm aware of in the county that has lost it, and they lost it decades ago, was Lombard. You know, they're what, 40, almost 50,000 people? They have been home rule for decades. But there are some examples where smaller communities have, you know, approved it. Not recently, obviously, our neighbors tried to do it here at the last election, and that failed. But the most recent examples I can think of, I think, is Warrenville and Lake Forest. But there may be others. I've got a whole file I can tell you, collected a bunch of material on different communities that have done it by referendum without the population count.
Darian had it, and their population went down, and they were going to lose it, and they...
Darian's never even been close to, I think they voted it in.
They never had 25,000, ever. They still...
No, they did.
They thought they did.
And they fell below, and they had to put it...
Oh, really? Okay, I thought, because I thought I remembered when we lived there, we voted on that, but maybe not.
You may have.
But you probably...
Prior to that, but they...
And I know we didn't have 25,000.
They had a similar population count situation, then it went down with the next, they did a special, and it might have been the decennial that brought it down, and then I think they did the referendum.
I'm pretty sure it was Rockford that lost their home rule, too.
Well, they have.
And look what happened to Rockford.
Rockford is another one, many, many decades ago, lost it, and they're not home rule. And most likely will never pass it from what people speculated. No. No.
Well, the biggest thing is, the public has to understand, it's not just a taxing tool.
No, there's a lot of other ramifications to it, and I think that's...
That's what, that's what the whole rhetoric is, oh, they get a home rule, they're going to tax us to death.
Right.
Somehow you have to get it out there, that that's not what this is all about.
And there's been a number of studies done over the years that demonstrate, statistically demonstrate, that the tax, property taxes don't typically go up because of that. You know, it's other revenue sources that actually offset that, that tend to shift the tax balance outside the community.
Right.
You know, through sales tax or other types of things like that.
And that was the case for us this year, this past levy, which we did, we actually, the amount that we levied, the increase over last year's extended amount, we could have actually levied more if we were still under the tax cap. If we were non-home rule, we could have levied more than we chose to as a home rule community.
And I think the biggest item on our taxes, obviously, is the school board, and being home rule or not home rule does not affect them.
Doesn't affect them.
So I don't think that, I don't know if the people understand that, when they see the school, you know, taxes going up, they're still looking at us.
It has to be part of the message to clarify, who does it really affect? What jurisdiction does it really affect? And it doesn't.
Yeah.
I guess the question that comes to play is to how much that would then in turn, you know, deal with what you're talking about, how much we would be able to put towards, say, for instance, the police pension fund and things like that. I mean, we would have to go back and relook at all that and probably fall below that line again.
Right.
I mean, I just, you know, I'm, maybe I'm, maybe I'm looking at it the wrong way, but I mean, I'm looking forward to what we could possibly lose in the long run.
No, it's a real concern.
You know, I mean, it's...
You know, we need to address it and have a plan, and it's something we've talked about. I think that's something we want to address. As soon as we get the budget passed, we need to start talking about how we're going to educate the public, what the impact will be in the next fiscal year if we happen to lose home rule, and how that's going to impact services.
It seems like the village manager knows his task there. All of us.
I thought a lot about it.
Well, it's kind of a fine line, because as she said, we can't really promote it.
No, we can't, it's got to be education. But we can, we can educate people in terms of what the dollar impact could be, and we can identify...
Potential cuts.
Potential cuts, exactly. You know, it may not be the cuts, finally, it's up to you folks, but it's things that may be impacted.
Services, it all comes down to services.
Safety's the biggest one.
Okay.
All right, anything else with community development?
Very good.
Okay. The next one is administration, HR and administration, which we've already done. And then the next one is the finance department. All right. Finance department, we're also looking at, the vast majority of our costs are for salaries and benefits, which is not too surprising. We're looking at regular wages and health insurance, and again, these are sort of the reorganization things that we've talked about previously. You can see an offsetting amount in professional services as we shift from the temp to a full-time employee. And then you'll also see one change in here is, there's been some credit card processing fees, which are the fees that we pay for allowing, to be able to allow our residents to pay their bills with a credit card. And so these fees, obviously, the majority of the bills that they're paying are their water bills, and we've never really budgeted for this amount, it's kind of always hit the finance department, and so it kind of made sense to move it out of the general fund into the water fund because it's a large portion, we moved about 75% of it to the water fund because primarily that's what people are paying when they pay their bills, they're mostly paying their water. So you will notice that change. So we've got the professional services we talked about, we've got our audit fees, which are actually less than they were last year, so that's, that's a good thing. We also have in here a document scanning. This is something that we had stopped several years ago as we, you know, had our difficult economic times, and we put in this initial request to be able to, you know, start that up again, so at least that we're not increasing the amount of storage we have in the back room. We would ideally, of course, like to, you know, someday start reducing it, but at least if we weren't increasing it, that was the request that's in here. However, that's also been listed as a level three cut. You'll see that's listed there as a level three. The other item on the level three list is the IGF away hotel and registration, and that would just be shifting it to an employee burden. You know, it's not necessarily eliminating the conference, it's just covering it through an employee burden. And you can see kind of the small little dollar amounts on our, on the red sheet, the level one and level two, kind of just some changes around, shifting a little bit here and there. Any questions on finance? All right, moving on to commissions. We've got, the first commission listed in here is the fire and police commission, and you'll notice in here that, because they're so small and they don't have very much detail, and they don't have very much detail, we just have the detail for the commissions, we didn't figure we needed a chart that repeats all the same detail. So, but you will notice the professional services dropped significantly this year, and you'll notice that, you know, at the bottom of professional services, it lists the costs for some of the prior years, kind of for the costs that we will have in the future. So, this year happens to be our lucky year where we don't have any scheduled testing. We expect an extra $8,000 coming up next year for new officer testing, and then about $15,000 for sergeant testings. Last year, we had some of those additional testings, this year we don't. That's why it's, seems to be so much lower. And then the other pieces are just the minimal amounts that are typically there. Moving on to the Planning and Zoning Commission, also very small, not a lot of things going on here. The one increase that you'll see is under advertising. We had budgeted 12,000. We're already a little bit over that, so just to more accurately reflect expenditures, we've moved that up to 15,000. You will also notice that there's, under miscellaneous supplies, about $250 for some public hearing signs, some file folders, that are just kind of miscellaneous things. The Planning and Zoning Commission is listed on the red and blue sheets under the combined section of Community Development and Planning and Zoning Commission. So, you will see them reflected, it's on, starts on the back of the first page, and the ones that say the 51117 were the cuts identified in the Community Development Department. The ones at the very end of the list that say 51123 are the ones that were identified as the Planning and Zoning. And there's no level three cuts for the Planning and Zoning, they're just listed there on the red sheet, you know, to compare the initial submission to what was, the adjusted submission was. Any questions on that? We have, we have made great time. We've covered tabs one all the way through tab six. That's, that's impressive.
Doesn't mean come Saturday when we come by, there are questions.
Spencer, did you explain? No, I have not covered that yet. Sorry, what?
It doesn't mean if we digest it, there will be questions.
Absolutely, and we anticipate that there will be questions, and we will, you answer them for you. Yes, I did also want to mention, I've distributed the, sort of the first installment of the budget reconciliations. This is something that we were asked through last year, and we did it again this year. So, you'll see, there's several different departments in here. I did not print all of them at once, we'll get the others to you at our next meeting. We've got several in here, enough to hopefully keep you entertained till our next one.
Now, last year, we were later in the fiscal year when we did it, so these are through...
These are through the end of March.
Okay, so you need to understand it's not a complete, because I think we actually had it through the end of the fiscal year, didn't we?
Yes, last year, since it was after the fiscal year, we were able to do it through the end of the fiscal year. At this point, we're kind of in the same situation as we mentioned last year, that, you know, in the initial budget preparation, you know, because we, departments look at starting so early in the process, they don't have a lot of the detail done yet. And so, we're in that same position at this point, where we don't have all of the expenditures made. So, we've got about a month's worth left on some of them, on the items that, you know, were billed back a month before, you know, that we, we have, what we've paid out through March. On some of the utilities and things, they don't bill us, in March, they bill us for February, so we've got a couple of months worth there. And you'll see there's some things that, you know, are not done yet. You'll also know that, you know, some of these are items that we have just done on our last finance ordinance, so we've had one in April that was not reflected in this, we had to have a cutoff, so we cut it off the end of March. So, you will notice the actual is probably less than the budgeted amount in most cases, and that's because it's not the whole year.
Any other questions for Spencer, or any other comments?
Good job.
Nice job.
Very nice job in this again, this year, and you're to be commended, and I want to thank the staff and everybody who's spending their time here tonight for coming here and helping us start digesting all this, including the village manager.
There's a lot of information, yeah.
There's a lot of information, too.
Absolutely. With nothing else to come before the board, I'll, there's no executive session required or asked for tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moves Seneca.
Second, Nero.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Seneca, trustee Klebina, trustee Nero, trustee Fleming, trustee Scott.
Yes. We're adjourned, thank you very much.
Yay, good meeting, good job.